Okay. Call meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the President.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Count Rob Hall. Alternate Commissioner Hall?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy's coming in. Commissioner Glass?
Here.
Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Here.
Chairman Seay?
Montano.
Chairman Montano? Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
I just wanted that for the record because it hasn't legally changed. We don't want any issues. Thank you. Um, minutes? Did everybody have a chance to go over the minutes from last? I was not present, so I would have to abstain.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second your motion.
Call for vote? Commissioner Hall? Alternate Commissioner Hall? Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Abstain.
Commissioner Putnam?
Abstain.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, Amanda?
Okay, our first public hearing this evening is a continued public hearing from last month. This is for a request for approval of a conditional use permit and a coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room or rooms with or without table board in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than 30 consecutive days, duration at 155 Olive Street. The owner applicant is Peter Savage. This is in the high-density residential zone. The property is a two-story structure that contains three bedrooms and three bathrooms. The floor plan is included. Mr. Savage has noted that he is normally allowed two persons per bedrooms plus an additional two. He's requesting that he be allowed the maximum of six. He does have a fully enclosed garage, so the use of the vehicle would not be a parking issue for the surrounding property owners. The property manager proposed for the property is Catalina Island Vacation Rental. We are proposing that you find this categorically exempt under SEQA Section 15305 of the State SEQA Guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations. We're also recommending that you can make the findings to support the coastal development permit, as this is in the, not within the coastal appealable zone, but the Planning Commission has made the finding that conditional use permits do require a coastal development permit. We have received several communications regarding this property in opposition. Most of them, I think, have been included in your packet. I did include, received one more today that I'd like, it's really short, I'd like to go ahead and read it into the record since we just received it this afternoon. This is from Sandra and Ernie Rodriguez, who live at 128 Beedaloo in the Upper Unit. The communication reads, "Ernie and I are unable to attend the Planning Commission tonight to voice our opposition to the granting of a CUP for the property at 155 Olive. We would like our opposition to go into the record. We live at 128 Beedaloo and already have parking and noise issues due to the heavy tour buses and the zangray traffic, especially during the summer months. Thank you for your consideration on this issue."
Okay.
And with that, we'll also note that Commissioners Putnam and Patterson recuse themselves due to the location within the conflict of interest zone.
Okay.
This application does comply with the saturation requirements, and it is also allowed under the 2019 growth policy. And the applicants are in the audience this evening.
Question for, question for staff. This property we applied six or seven months ago, or over six months ago, and was denied by the Planning Commission. Can you go over a little bit of the history of that before we start this hearing?
They, when Mr. Savage was the original developer of the property and they constructed it as a duplex, and during the time that the two units were for sale, he had applied for a transient rental permit for both of the units, and I believe they were both denied. The top unit has since sold to someone who's occupying it, the owner occupied, it's not a vacation home, and Mr. Savage retained ownership of the bottom two levels, which is the bottom unit, and he is coming back to you to now ask for a permit just for the bottom unit.
Thank you.
Did you have a question?
Mm-hmm. So there is no year-round possibility for any, anything that goes with this unit? It's just standalone?
It's, Mr. Savage can, once, I think that would be a question for Mr. Savage on what his ultimate intended use of the property is for.
I'm going to open it up to the public. Would anyone in the audience care to speak on this item? I think Janie might have a question for.
Pete, I think Mrs. Hall is asking if your intent is to use the property yourself, or is there an opportunity to rent the property year-round? Can you come up to the podium? Yes, sir, if you can come answer the question.
And also offer any comments you want to in favor of your application.
I'll give you my spiel. My wife Kathy and I are the applicants for 155. We've been coming here for 50 years. We've had a home on 315 Sumner since 1977. We understand that people won't like a lot of change in their neighborhoods and a lot of congestion or crowding. They put a Vons directly across the street from me at 315 Sumner. I didn't oppose it because I felt it met the legal ramifications. Also, since 1977, we've never had an issue with a CUP rental. So I would just like to throw that in. In terms of traffic and heavy use, like you stated, Amanda, we have the right to have eight people in there. I've limited it to six. We have an enclosed garage, so there'd be no impact on the street at all. Olive Street is crowded, not by CUP rentals, it's just people are there. We have a two-car garage that was purposely built for that, for to sell. My nearest neighbors above me, to my left, to my right, behind me, my closest neighbor on Beedaloo, do not oppose me going in there. Also, the Olive Street saturation level is virtually none. I mean, Amanda, is there, can you tell me, is there one CUP resident, you know, permit there? I know it's very, very little. And I know Sumner's very, very high.
There's one on Maiden.
So one?
We don't show one on Olive. There are homes that are vacation homes that are not occupied year-round, but to our knowledge there's not a transiently permitted property.
So it's a very low, I mean, there's very few CUP permits up there. I just ask you to judge the application, which meets all city and legal parameters, and to not inject the feelings of CUPs, which I understand. In this case, it's a very low-density area where the CUP would be. There would be more impact in some ways if someone was living there full-time, which I'm not opposed to either. But I would like to have my options, you know, going forward with the CUP.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Is the property for sale?
No. It's been taken off the market four or five months ago.
So originally, we're going to sell it, and it did not have CUPs, and then you asked for them at that time?
I'm sorry, the original sale for the Upper Unit was based on me applying for two, for a CUP unit, which I applied for both. They were both denied. It was never contingent on the sale for me to get approval. And so the current resident, who did not get the CUP, nor did I for below, is not opposing me going for the CUP as well.
Well, I have a different story about that.
Do you?
Well, in this, in our municipal code, it doesn't say anything about any restrictions on granting CUPs during, if homes are for sale, so I'm not sure. Yeah.
When you, when you say you have a different story on it, I spoke with the owner above, what's the different story? Because I spoke with Mike.
He, he does not oppose it in public, but he does not accept it either.
He did not sign a letter of opposition and told me personally he would not oppose the CUP. He, in fact, was the one that asked me to apply for a CUP for his home.
When I spoke to him, he said the same thing to me. He wasn't in opposition to it, and he's there four or five days a week now. He's there a lot. That's directly above his.
But it's a correct, he does not oppose my application.
Yeah, no, I spoke to him, and I asked him just that question because I saw it coming out.
So the person that's, the people that are closest to me, left, right, atop, are not opposed to this?
Do we have, are there people opposed to it, Amanda, in those communications?
Yes, we received some letters from people who live further down Olive. We've received letters from people who live down on Beedaloo. We have not received any letters to properties immediately adjacent.
Do you have any questions, Eric?
I noticed in the staff recommendation, it's, when you were talking about parking, that it says that you're not going to provide an autoet for that unit. Is that correct?
No, it's not correct. I have a full-enclosed garage that would hold probably three golf carts. There's no street impact.
I, I drove up there because we had, we had a similar issue when we were voting on items on Upper Terrace and Middle Terrace about the impact of giving another unit access to a golf cart, and they proved that they had their own little space. And I, so I went up to Olive to make sure, and there is a full-on garage that you can go inside. And I also did note last time, when the denied for this particular property, was the concern about the egress and going in and out of Olive Street, and that there wasn't enough room for a vehicle to turn around. So I went up and looked at the last one we've all voted on, and it's half, the street is half the size of Olive, and that's not even including the dirt area, but, you know, on the side of the 30 feet entrance and exit. So it is double the amount of, of area.
Eric, I think that's a standard condition of approval, and if Mr. Savage is requesting that that not be the condition on his application, then it would be appropriate to change that.
Right, and that's what I wanted to get that clarified before we close the public hearing, that whether or not you wanted an autoet to be a part of this rental.
It would not be.
It would not be.
However, if someone rented a golf cart, they could park inside of our garage. I will not be providing an autoet unless, if, if you would prefer to have a golf cart there.
No, the standard condition which is on here is that you won't be providing an autoet.
That's correct.
So I'm not going to convert rental golf carts.
And that, and that does not prohibit you from owning a golf cart and using it when you're in the unit. You just can't provide it to your guests.
We would not be providing it.
Okay, then that, then that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay.
Amanda, could we hear the opposition letters for this?
I think they're in your packet. And so they're part of the record.
Except for Ernie's that just came.
Yeah, and I just read Ernie's.
The question is, would it satisfy?
Come up to the podium.
I could either provide a golf cart or not, if it would calm and make feel, people feel more comfortable with that. My thoughts are that most people cannot rent a golf cart. They can't, there's no cars to rent here. However, if it would be more appealing to the neighbors at large, I would be happy to provide a golf cart. So I'll leave that with you. And my thoughts are, my initial thoughts would be to not provide a golf cart, so there would be not another vehicle in that area.
It's, it's completely up to you, the applicant. It's in the, it's in that we do not allow golf carts on the flats because there's no parking.
Right.
How, however, you're not on the flats, and some people have applied on the hills with a golf cart, but they had to provide to us that there was adequate parking and before we voted on that.
Would it be, would it be a detriment to provide a golf cart in the area that I'm applying for?
I don't think so because you have off-street parking.
You have, you have adequate parking as far as I went up and saw, personally. I mean, so.
So I would like to then have the option of that, if that makes sense.
So can you put that in the record?
So that the condition of approval would be that he may include a golf cart with the rental.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, Thomas.
Thomas, 129 Olive. Obviously, parking is not an issue in this area, so I'm glad we've gotten that out of the way, whether there's a golf cart or not. He's underprovisioned what he would allocate to market or have allotted to the space for vacation rental, because he understands that the property will get harder use out of using it to the full extent. But I believe that's, you know, his choice in terms of taking care of the property, the building, his, his neighborhood. There's certainly no relevance in traffic or tour buses going back and forth, so I would like to add that into consideration. And Commissioner Hall, I appreciate that you have inside gossip, but I would appreciate it if you would keep it out of legal arguments that are brought up in this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to open it up for Commission. Would anyone like to make a motion, or?
I looked at this property, first of all, the value of the property loads probably a million two to a million four of this particular unit. So I don't think there, and you want two people less, I don't see that the property is going to have, you know, get trashed or anything like that without you guys. I'm sorry, I don't see the property getting trashed or something at this kind of price point. This is a very expensive property, therefore, it would never be rented out as a year-round rental. No one's going to build a, you know, million four hundred thousand dollar property and rent it out for $2,000 a month. I think the fact that you're asking for two less people than what it would normally get a CUP is admirable, and you have off-street parking, and therefore, I would make a, I would recommend that we, or I'd make a motion that we would approve this CUP.
Would anyone care to second?
I'll second.
Yes?
You have four letters in opposition, and it had been a pretty vehement CUP the first time go-around. And, you know, the, the neighborhood is, except for one gentleman there, that I guess is an immediate neighbor. I'm not sure, but, you know, it, they have a hotel across the street. I, I can't really, to me, it's the, a perfect example why we should vote no, because the realtor mantra that always takes place is, no one's going to rent it year-round, but you can't guarantee that. And what I'm more concerned with is the neighborhoods now that we're losing.
So.
And I get your comment, Janie. I mean, what you're saying has got some rationale, but turn it the other way around. We live in a resort community. We realize that 100 days of the year, this place is a busy place. The impact on the neighborhood is much less as a seasonal rental than the impact on a neighborhood of it being a year-round residential property. If you digest the complaints that are in the opposition of this, of this issue, including the letter that we don't have copy of that Amanda read into the record, the reality is, is they're talking about vehicle noise, they're talking about tour bus noise, talking about rental golf carts, they're talking about quality of life issues that are real. I'm not saying that they don't exist, but it's not what happens within the four walls of a dwelling that any of these complaints made reference to. It was all of the things that happen outside those four walls.
That's called a neighborhood.
Correct. So it, it, so it's irrelevant in my mind whether it is what happens within the four walls of a year-round occupant, or what happens within the walls of a vacation rental. The reality is the impact on the neighborhood with the seasonal, with seasonal use as a CUP is less impact on the neighborhood than it would be if it was occupied, those four walls were occupied 365.
I don't agree with that.
We can't make a tie with CUPs to year-round housing. Bart makes a very, very good point. You're not going to rent, well, I take that back. There are people in town that can afford to pay those kind of rents. There are fewer people that will pay those kind of rents than there would benefit to a CUP.
I'm.
I mean, so digest, digest the complaints. If you digest the complaints affecting the neighborhood, it's not about what happens within those, within the four walls or the confines of the property. It's what's happening in the street. It's what's happening, you know, so we should be talking about quality of life issues, about vehicle noise. We should be, but that has no bearing on a CUP. No bearing.
I guess, I've got a, I've got a concern with this one in that it was denied within a year, and they're reapplying, which is fine, because you can every six months. But the problem was, I remember the gist of the argument last time was that this neighborhood is close to hotels, but it really still has a strong sense of neighborhood. And, and they made the argument pretty effectively that it wasn't appropriate, and it was actually denied. My concern is that it seemed like good logic at the time, but then six months later, I'm struggling with, what's the difference?
Well.
If I could, I mean, I don't, but.
If I could just go back on the discussion, I think it was over a year ago. The discussion was, there were, there were more than one CUPs. There were multiple CUPs. And the discussion there was, this neighborhood did not have any, or maybe just one CUP, and that adding a CUP to this neighborhood would change the character of the neighborhood, and that the, the structure of the neighborhood, because it was close to the mountains, the noise would echo and stuff like that, which was one of the findings. And so, but that was a split, a split vote. I would note, the only thing that's happened is you have spent the last year discussing CUPs and zones and stuff like that. And one of the arguments that, and I'm just, I'm not taking a point here, I'm just saying, what the arguments have been reflected is that, do we force CUPs only in the flats, or do we spread them citywide? And, and so, one of the arguments, the debates that you had was, should we exempt this area from CUPs or not? And that's one of the items that you discussed later tonight, but I think you've had the benefit of that discussion for a year now, and so I don't know if that changes anything, but I just wanted to reflect that you've had these discussions and these debates over the last year.
And to build on that, I remember we were, at the time of this decision, if I have my timing correct, we were also discussing what saturation meant, in that it wasn't just the literal definition in the ordinance where you basically have to have someone on all four sides of you, that it also meant more than that, which was not written in code, but was something that would basically be done through policy at the Planning Commission. So I'm just really struggling with this, because I think normally, it's not that hard of a decision, I think, except in this case, we did deny it, and like you said, it was a close vote. But it was because there was little to no CUPs in that area, and it did have a strong sense of neighborhood, because a lot of people showed up. And I think there's going to be a little confusion in that neighborhood on whether, you know, when something gets denied, does that just mean, come again in six months?
Well, I would just, I would just caution everyone that because it was denied, you have to wait six months. So this is kind of like what we call legally a de novo. It's, you know, you take the arguments that are made today, and you kind of, you can, you can have that background in there, but the importance of that background is, those were some factors, do those factors exist today? And you have to consider it, that's why we wait six months.
Right, and there's the struggle. I, yeah.
And, and to be, and to be fair, six.
Those factors might be still there.
And I get it, and six months ago, the factors were it was two-unit supply, correct?
Right.
And so now we're looking at half of that impact.
And also.
Still doubling the number of CUPs in the street.
But also.
And, but I'll, go ahead, sorry.
Also, nowhere in the municipal code does it state that hill sides are exempt from CUPs. So if you want to give someone a fair hearing, we need to do it according to the municipal code. We haven't decided on saturation. City Council hasn't come back, given us a parameter on what we need to do. We've been discussing this. So do I think it's fair that we're in the discussion stages, and we go back and forth, which is great? That's how we move forward in, you know, what we're trying to achieve. However, do we penalize the people in front of us when they're satisfying an application? Because in here, nowhere in the municipal code did I read Hill Street, Upper Terrace, Lower Terrace, Olive, any of those streets are exempt from CUPs. They are part of the city of Avalon.
The code says they're allowed in any zone with a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
I'm going to say, is that discrimination of the people on the flats?
Right, exactly.
That's why it's the way it is, yeah. I think the biggest thing to me is, I went and spoke to the person that lives on, it's, it's basically two condos like this to the person who lives above, and I spoke to him at the city party, and I directly asked him whether he was opposed to it or not. And he said, no, I'm not opposed to it all. But then you mentioned in back channels that somehow he is. I don't think that's right.
Well, I talked to him at that same party.
I wasn't finished. As a planning commissioner, to sit here and say that publicly he won't say that, which he did to me, and then to say, but he thinks differently, I, I just don't think that's right.
Well, why isn't that gossip?
He didn't.
I spoke to the man, he told me, he definitely was not against it.
Okay.
As for, as for impact on the street, if parking isn't allowed in front of the garage, then it's kind of a mute point, you're still taking up that spot. I mean, there's not, if you can't park in front of the garage, and that is a space along the street, that parking is not allowed.
Was that a question to me?
I don't know if that's a question, it's a statement.
Well, it's, there is no parking in front of any garage.
Exactly.
Yeah, and so that's why the garage was created by new codes.
So it's the same as taking a parking place.
Well, but any person that builds a home on a lot is going to be taking a space, so it's, you, that's like saying we can't build anywhere, because it's going to take a space on, on the street.
But I think it would be good to clarify that the space was taken when the property was developed.
And isn't that requirement in the municipal code?
And they required, we required off-street parking for the development originally, and that's why they built the garage. and that's why they built the garages.
And I think what Mr. Savage is saying is, if you, if he didn't put in the garage, they would have had their car parked there anyhow. So what extra space did they take? They would have been parking for the house in the same place.
If I can just address one quick thing. It wasn't six months ago, it was a year ago September that I came before you for two permits. And now it's one. I've talked to people that signed the original letter that are not opposed to it. I provided you with current letters of those that support me, above, on both sides. I've taken from eight down to six. I meet every single parameter that I know of. And again, I understand that people don't like change. They don't want to change their neighborhoods. Again, I had a neighborhood change with Vons going across the street, but that's what happens. We can't stop progress. We can be mindful and respectful of our neighbors. And I think I'm trying to do that with providing less than what I'm entitled to in terms of occupancy. I'm providing parking that will not impact anyone along that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
So we had a motion in a second?
Motion in a second?
Any more discussion?
Call for vote?
Commissioner Hall?
No.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, Amanda?
I'll go get, do I get them both?
We can, uh...
No, I only get, Eric, you're out.
Um, Alex. Alex, I got a text that people that are watching on TV can't, is not being heard.
The audio's not coming through?
Audio's not coming through.
Did he see you or hear you?
I talked to Rick one night, Rick, which is with a cable company. And because I was not getting this very loud, you might keep going up to 100. And he said, "It's on, you're in, and some of the things should turn it up. You should do someone, you come and see it and check it out." And he was like, "You know, it's very loud at all." You guys were, it's a year...
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
We're waiting on Scott, right?
Yes.
How about I start the staff report?
Okay.
While he's finishing what he's doing. Okay, so this item is also a request for approval of a conditional use permit and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of rooms or rooms without table board in a dwelling unit at 242 Marilla. The owner applicant is Ezekiel and Juanita Casillas. This is in the high-density residential zone. The property is a three-story structure that contains three bedrooms and two bathrooms. And then there's a second unit, right, Juanita? Where's Juanita? There's a second one-bedroom unit, correct? Okay. They are just requesting the transient rental unit for the three-bedroom unit, correct? That's what I thought. The property manager for the property will be Catalina Island Vacation Rentals. We are recommending that you find it categorically exempt under the Sequel Exemption 15305 of the State Sequel Guidelines, which is minor alterations in land use limitations. We are recommending that you can make the appropriate findings to grant the coastal development permit. This property is not within the 300-foot appealable zone for the coastal commission, where the coastal development permit could be appealed to the coastal commission. We're also recommending that you make the appropriate findings to support the conditional use permit. The housing statement indicates that up until recently, this was an owner-occupied unit and thus they are now putting it in the, requesting to put it in the transient market. We are requesting that you make the findings that this complies with the saturation requirements and that it is allowed by the 2019 growth policy. And Juanita is in the audience if you have any questions for her.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public. Would anyone care to speak on this item? So are we, I don't... Okay. Hello?
Hello, I'm Adi, Juanita Nessekiel's daughter. I guess right now, my parents have one vacation rental and then they have the Vuitte Lou House and 339 Sumner that are year-round rentals to locals, me being one of them. And with the 242 Marilla, they do want the top portion to be a vacation rental, but there is a one-bedroom downstairs that we will have year-round for locals.
Okay, thank you. Is there no golf cart with this? I didn't see...
This is back to the standard conditions of approval?
Right, yeah. You're not, I didn't see a requesting. I know the parking of theirs.
It's not?
There's no off-street parking?
Oh, you have off-street?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the question is, did you want to include a golf cart to your transient guest?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, okay. And you have off-street parking?
Oh, you have that, that goes, right? That little driveway that goes down, yeah, okay.
So yes, to including a golf cart and yes, they have off-street parking.
Okay. And we're doing two per bedroom plus two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing now. Would anyone on the commission want to have any questions on this particular application? Do you have any questions? Anyone would like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Call for vote, please?
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next one, we'll have Commissioners Putnam and Patterson accuse themselves.
Some musical chairs tonight, huh?
I'll just go ring an air.
Okay. Commissioner Patterson's not here at all during this.
No.
It should just be the fun discussion at the end.
I told her, she's watching the impeachment vote.
Oh. Can you give us the play-by?
I asked her to.
Okay, so I think we're ready. Amanda?
And we're waiting for Eric.
Oh.
We didn't have to wait for this idiot, but we have to wait for this.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry. I don't have a vote.
Important questions always come at the end, anyway. Maybe Eric forgot he's supposed to be here.
Well, you know, it's like, it's like, it's like WWE wrestling match. You know how it's going to turn out?
Yeah.
You know how it's going to turn out at the house? It's pretty tough around the center.
It's nice to listen to the stall.
Didn't bet on anybody.
I have no comment.
Okay. Our next item is a request for approval of a conditional use permit and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room or rooms without table board in a dwelling unit at 240, 224 and 1/2 Whitley. The owner is Raymond and Helen Howard and this is in the high-density residential zone. The property is configured as a duplex. The top unit has submitted an accessory dwelling unit application and the unit applying for the transient rental permit is the top two floors, which contains two bedrooms and two bathrooms. The property owner will be Veronica Bravo and her phone number is included. We're also recommending that you can find, make the finding that this is categorically exempt under the State Sequel Guidelines, Minor Alterations in Land Use Limitations. The project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone for the coastal development permit, so it could not be appealed to the coastal commission. We're recommending that you can make the appropriate findings in support of the coastal development permit and in support of the conditional use permit. This was an owner-occupied unit, I believe, up until Howard and then they've moved. Yeah. So, the applicant is in the audience, a representative is in the audience if you have any questions. And we're recommending approval of the application and with the finding that it is complies with the saturation requirements and it is allowed under the 2019 growth policy.
Thank you, Amanda.
And to clarify the question that's come up in the other three, do you want to include a vehicle with a, no. This property does not have any off-street parking. Oh, and I did, that's what this aerial photo is, is to show you the location of the property because the map in the staff report are, we were having some copier problems and the map is not very clear. So that just shows you the location of the property.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public.
Hi, my name is Stephen Johnson. My wife and I are currently in Escrow and we are the buyers of this property and we are kind of the ones that are looking for this. So I've been coming to this island pretty much since I was born. My wife and I are married over in Descanso. I had a reception at the casino. So we come out here a lot. We wanted to have a place here to enjoy. And when we get to retiring age or at least not working our day jobs every day, we wanted, we do want to be out here long-term. But in the short-term, we do need to be able to offset. And if I have it as long-term, then I'm obviously unable to use it at all. So what our plan is, this does have an ADU at the bottom unit and that's going to be set up for long-term, more than six months for sure and hopefully longer than that for a local resident. The upper two would be short-term is what we're asking for the permit for and it'll be used by my wife and my family. Anyway, we really hope for your support on this. It does not have any golf cart. It absolutely will not. It has no off-street parking. There's no chance of that happening. I myself, my parents have rental property and we have a place in Mammoth, so I'm very familiar with managing short-term. And not what I do as a day job, but it is just a side thing for me. But I'm familiar with the process of making sure we have good people that are not going to cause problems. So if there's any questions at all and for me or on our intentions or anything?
Do you have any questions?
No? Okay, well, thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to speak on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Does anybody, anybody want to discuss this item or care to make a motion?
I appreciate that they're using the property for year-round and vacation rental use and personal use. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this item with the list of standard conditions. Second?
Call for vote? Commissioner Hall?
On the grounds that you just purchased the property, is that correct? You're in Escrow now?
Escrow right now.
And you realized it did not come with a CUP?
Correct.
And it, this is going to be financing your mortgage?
Well, it'll be helping offset. There's, the numbers don't quite work where it's profitable, so it's not necessarily a direct return investment, but it'll help offset so that I don't have the full expense to it.
And next door is your residence, your...
No.
I'm representing the Howards, Janie, Kathy, me.
Oh, hi, Kathy.
I'm representing the Howards there out of town.
Oh, okay.
There doesn't seem to be any opposition. Did you get letters of opposition? There's just several transients around us.
Kathy, you want to stand up, please?
Sorry.
That's okay.
So I represent the Howards, been selling for 32 years. I'm a fourth-generation Islander. I feel that when people come into town and want to bring their business here, that it should be acceptable for them to try to offset, like he said, his monies that he puts out. When you're putting out $700,000, a million, four, three million, whatever the number is, most people don't have the opportunity to just use it every weekend and they do need to offset. He happens to be a diver, so he would be bringing people into town that would be good family business, good family, you know, that come in and use it and then go home. And they get to use it themselves, you're quite right. But I just feel that if you didn't have these people coming into town and you had just Islanders, you wouldn't have the business and all the opportunities that we do offer to people. I just feel it's a really good thing for you to do. I do know that there's a need for housing, but like Bart said, with a $1.4 million piece of property, not many people are going to be able to afford $5,000 or $6,000 a month. And that's what you would need to offset a property like that, or probably even more. This seems like a good situation for these guys. We were in, for sale for a year and a half almost. And again, I represent the seller and they're wishing to move forward. They applied for him. He paid for it. And our wish is to move forward with the CUP and hope that he can do that. He's got a win-win. He got a year-round downstairs, which is going to be somebody on site for him too, which is nice. He does have Veronica Bravo in place for management. And then he can use his and transient it upstairs. And I just feel like it's bringing a lot more business into town opposed to someone who was year-round and might not go down in downtown or might not go down to, you know, to Descanso to play or whatever. So I just feel like it's a good thing for you. It's a win-win, I think, on both sides.
Yeah, that is getting to be a pretty saturated street. However, it's overcrowded in just about every way. And the, I, I just feel like the neighbors are, there's a certain weariness at even showing up and writing letters now because the Planning Commission is pretty much, you know, has... Goes by the code and is a seven-zero situation that is just now changing slightly to people questioning them.
Right.
And, you know, do you really want party houses in your neighborhood?
Well, that doesn't necessarily mean that somebody that owns a $1.4 million house and doesn't rent it, lets their friends use it, isn't going to be a party house either. So you have to take it on a base-by-base situation. And it, it's, it is a saturated area, you're quite right. They're not impacting the street. They're not parking. They don't have a golf cart. They have nowhere to put it. You're up 75 steps to the top. Not everybody's going to want to rent that either. But he does have people that are divers that will drag their stuff up that street and do it. And, you know, not everybody can buy on the flats. But Whitley is a street that does have transients and they are quite, you know, visible around us, so. But the immediate neighbors aren't having a problem. Grant and Rita next door, the Ventners two doors up. I thought we'd have a little opposition tonight, but one of them that I thought would be here is not, so I'm glad. But in your current conditions and in your current, what you're asking for, I believe he is within the parameters of that.
Well, because he does have a year-round, it's certainly more...
It's a win-win, yeah. Because you're getting your percentage on the top and you're getting a year-rounder downstairs.
And we appreciate no golf cart.
Yeah. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else on the commission have any questions or concerns? Okay.
So we have a motion in a second?
Yes, we do.
Call for vote?
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Montano?
Yes.
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Now, we're gonna have some study sessions if you guys wanna learn about the future of CUPs and accessory dwelling units.
It's actually good stuff.
We're gonna take a break for half a second.
Sure.
Okay. Take a break.
Yeah, exactly.
The accessory dwelling units.
Is that your mail, don't you?
Yeah.
It's a what? It should say revised on it. Yes.
Everybody here? Oh, we're waiting for Rosio.
I think we're all here, okay. Where Rosio go? Okay, so, in your packet?
Are we?
Not in your packet. Are we back on board?
Have we always been on? Okay.
Okay. This, this week, we had some challenges. So, in, this evening, I gave you a staff report that says revised on the top of it. Item five, revised. This is information that we've provided you to, about amortization and what that means when you are talking about a land use entitlement. There's, we discuss why amortization is a valuable tool for cities to use, because we don't wanna get into the area of illegal taking, and the staff report talks about what a taking is. And for purposes of the public, I'll read this. A legal taking typically falls into two categories. The first is a physical taking, usually accomplished through a process known as eminent domain. Imminent domain is used by jurisdictions to acquire property for a purpose that promotes or protects the public health and safety. The most recognized use of eminent domain is to widen or add new roads that affect private property. The second form of a taking is a regulatory taking. This is when a jurisdiction imposes a new regulation that is perceived as reducing or removing the enjoyment or use of private property. The changes to the transient rental permit process, which is what we're discussing now, could be pursued, perceived as a regulatory taking. While transient rental owners will be required to adhere to the new restrictions, it could have the effect of affecting their perceived use of their property. So, the city attorney has recommended that we consider, in our new code, some level of amortization on the existing permits, that they would not just automatically convert.
So, if you recall, we are moving forward with an ordinance that will be brought to you in January, which will basically say that from this point forward, CUPs will not be CUPs, they will be licenses, which would belong to the individual property owner that appears before you and gets that, that entitlement. And then, when, I'm sorry, in future, they're gonna be licenses, so they only go with the applicant that is before you. And then, when they want to transfer the property, the person that purchases the property comes before you. The question is, what do you do with the existing CUPs? And so, we've had some discussion on this, as to whether you automatically say that those people have to come back, all of them, two-hundred-and-fifty, come back to you and reapply? Or do we say that you can keep the CUP for as long as you own it? Or do we keep it for ten years, and then at that point, if you transfer the property, it goes away, or it converts to a license? And so, one of the things we have come up with is, is that existing CUPs remain CUPs. Once the property is sold or transfers, that person that then converts to either a license that that person owns as long as that person, or you say that they can continue to use that property as a CUP for two, I think Mike had said, seven years, and then it becomes a license. So, we're just trying to put a reasonable amortization period on this, and the safest way that other cities have done is say that the owner that currently has it gets the CUP for as long as that person owns it. If they sell it, the next person can still use it as a transient rental, but it only becomes a license. And then that, that way, that person gets the benefit of it, but the person that that person sells it to, the second buyer, has to come in and apply for a CUP. So, that's, that's kind of taking the collective discussion that you've had over the last year and kind of putting it together so that it ends, CUPs running forever. It gives existing property owners the right to sell their property and get the benefit of any increased value of having a CUP, but it cuts it off after that.
The second, the third buyer.
The third buyer. Well, I mean, the second buyer, the second buyer, the third, the third owner.
So, the current owner keeps the CUP until they sell it or transfer it, right?
Right.
When they sell it or transfer it, the new, the second owner?
Gets a license.
Automatically, he automatically gets a license, which is the exact same entitlement to rent, to lease a property out to visitors and stuff, so they, they, they retain the value of that.
He doesn't have to come before us.
Doesn't have to come before you.
But then, when he goes to sell it, then that doesn't, it stops it.
They're buying, they're buying knowing.
And then that new person has to come before you and ask for.
Yeah, and presumably, the person who's buying that understands that it's switching, so they can still use it.
Correct, and so the person that has it right now enjoys the value of the CUP that it, that he has, he or she has right now. We're not taking away anything of value from that person. The person that buys it still has the right to rent it out, but what that person loses is the right to automatically have it transferred to the next.
But they buy it knowing that.
But they buy it knowing it.
I mean, that seems both safe and fair, but does that also apply to people who are grandfathered in? I mean, is this every type?
Yes.
Everyone?
Yes.
And, and then, may I ask, when we had first started about making this an administrative, a license permit, it was, it was going to be renewed yearly as a, that's what we talked about. We talked about that if you had the new kind, or if it was Trent, you got the new kind because you bought a house with a CUP, either way, right?
The license lasts a, a year because it follows with the business permit, but you don't have to come before the planning commission.
No, but it would just, you would come. So, that would, that would hold the same for people that bought a piece of property that was formerly a CUP, and now they are an administrative permit? They get, have a license now that runs the same until they sell the property? Would they also have to come and, you know what I'm saying?
I think the annual renewal would apply to the first buyer.
To the first buyer, to anyone that comes before you.
Anyone who has the license, it's an annual.
Anyone that comes before you in March.
All right, I just wanted to know if the same would apply to an existing CUP that went to a subsequent owner and would have to do it the same as if somebody did come into the city, to the planning commission, and, and, what a brand-new one?
Right, I think we would anticipate the, that the administrative permit's gonna have an application fee.
Uh-huh.
And then you'll have an annual renewal fee, just like your business license.
So, whether it's a new one, or one that came with a sale of a property?
So, the first buyer, the first buyer under this scenario would not have to go through the application fee and process.
But they would.
But they would have to do the annual fee, just like you do a business license.
The annual license, just like it'd be tied with the business license.
That's what I wanted to.
What would be the price of the license?
We haven't said that.
We haven't said it has to be on what, what the cost to the city, so it's probably gonna be under a hundred dollars.
It'd be significantly less than what it is now.
Yeah, it's gotta be, what is the cost of, of making certain that we have the current owner and the current person or entity that's gonna be monitoring the use of it? Because remember, all CUPs require that you have someone who lives on the island present during the time that that's rented, and so, one of the main purposes of the license and the annual check-in is to just make certain that we have someone who's still on the island, 'cause that may change every, every year and stuff like that.
I'm still concerned about the grandfathered ones. Nobody's ever contested that in another city. I mean, where has this been tried out? I mean, if you got a CUP, it, it does ride with the property.
Right, right, and so, and, and what this is.
I get it with selling it, but I mean the grandfathered ones, 'cause we're down to what, not that very many of them?
I think there's about fifty.
That's what I mean. It's, it's not insurmountable.
Well, and what, but what the discussion was is if it's a grandfathered CUP, it's the same rights as a regular CUP. And what the commission's direction was, was that we did not want to just say that the, you no longer have a CUP, it's gonna convert to, to a license. So, it's gonna be triggered by something, and the triggering of the change will be the transfer of property.
That's what I mean, so you, but that's.
And, and for a grandfathered CUP, when you transfer the property, it then becomes a license. So, you can still transfer it once, but then after that.
Puts everyone in the same playing field.
It's gonna, it evens the playing field.
All the way around, the grandfather, the ones that have them now, would all be on the same field.
Um, what's, what, what, how, how is this going to be? I mean, I'm just posing this, that how, how, what's gonna be the trigger for you as a city to know that there has been a sale of a piece of property that has a CUP? I mean, how are we gonna build in that?
Typically.
You need a business license.
Typically, we know when people come in to pull the business license, if we don't acquire that information some other way. But typically, we know.
How, how will the city know that property's been sold?
Well, we're gonna, well, we're gonna make it a requirement.
As an agent, I would have to disclose it to someone? I would have to disclose it to the buyer that, hey, you know, you're gonna.
And we're gonna make it a requirement in the license code that comes to you, that when you sell your property, when you purchase property, you have to notify the city of this property change.
Like the old sewer line.
Just like the sewer line.
Just exactly, yeah.
No, no.
That's a good point.
That makes sense, that way it's tracked, but any agent in town would have to disclose this to the next buyer. And I, I mean, as an agent, I'd make sure they signed something, so they could, you know.
Come back at you.
Say, no, it was always supposed to run with it, no, that changed.
And again, the whole purpose is we're not harming existing people with CUPs, it's just they're putting on notice that the person that buys it can go ahead and use it, but after that, they just have to come, and it's not saying that it's banned. It's saying that they have to come back to the planning commission and apply for a transient occupancy permit, not a CUP. It's a transient occupancy permit.
So, Zach, you're general, 'cause we wanna, the council kinda wanted to know what your thoughts are, and then we're gonna bring this up to the council.
That's probably the best way to handle it and manage it. Having, having the CUP follow the life of a piece of property in perpetuity is bad planning, I think, and this is the best resolve to that.
And I, and I also was worried about this two-year, one-year, I mean, it's too hard to track.
Can't keep track.
It's too hard to track, and then I also worry about the taking, that also, that little piece kind of got me. So, I, I think this is a good, I mean, for me.
It's a good compromise, it gives the job.
Does it protect the current owner?
And I'm actually impressed a little bit, Scott, because you could've taken the less aggressive method and, you know, boosted your lot fees a little bit, you know, by taking the, the other side of that animal, so.
Thank you, Bob.
So, the, our other task from the council is to come up with some proposals on how we want to handle saturation. So, we know this has been a difficult topic, so what the council wants from you is not a final decision or a final number, but some options on where you think we could handle saturation.
What they're basically saying is, give us a menu of saturation options, and we will then decide as a council what we, what item on the menu we want you to purchase, and then they'll send it back to the planning commission for development of saturation criteria. So, it can be, they didn't say limit it to one or two items on the menu, it's just, okay, well, I've got. Give them options.
Okay.
Oh, hang on, on that item, I'm sorry, I made a mistake. Any item of discussion on CUPs?
Yes, come on, Pete.
This is about, this is about.
That's why I went back to that.
This is about the transient rentals.
Yes.
Hi, Pete Edwards, one seventeen, Vito. So, the dreaded CUP is always just like hotly contested event, and there's a lot of activity about what you're proposing to do, a lot of work, and, and, is anybody determined what the objective is? What's, what are you going to resolve by changing the plan?
Well, the, the objective is, is that most CUPs that come before this commission are, you have the owner saying, I'm gonna do this, this is what I want for, it's a factor to, to, to consider, and it's how that owner is gonna manage the property. And if the CUP runs with the land, that owner can change ten times, and it could go from a responsible owner to an irresponsible owner, and there's no input of the planning commission, there's no oversight, there's no review as, as to how things are going, and so, this process just says that the person, after the first change, the person that's gonna be managing the property and owning the property has to come before the planning commission and basically vouch for how they're gonna run it.
Okay, but I mean, if, if I have a CUP and I sell my property to Amanda, there's no way to tell whether Amanda is gonna be a responsible or irresponsible owner just by coming to the planning commission.
That's right.
So, there's, there's a whole process in place already.
I would, I would, no, I think that's part of this, instead of making it a land use entitlement, that it's now a license, it, number one, and I've heard this just by listening to my cohorts here on the commission, is that it's a lot less expensive to do it administratively, and also, we have no, once a conditional use permit is granted, I mean, it's very hard to track. It's very hard for the city to keep track of people that are, are not, are doing it responsibly, are not doing it responsibly. So, this way, when they have to come back and pay a minimal fee on a yearly basis, if there's been complaints, if there's been, if they haven't, like, it hasn't been inspected, and there's no fire, smoke alarms, or anything that can possibly happen in a rental, the city has a little bit more of a handle on where these are, who's, who's, who is taking care of them, as Scott mentioned.
So, is the auditing process gonna be completely different?
No, but, I mean, it's just.
Well, then, why would you, why would you be, why would you know anything different than you already do?
We're still tracking TOT, you still have to pay TOT. The other issue is, there has been a perception on a lot of people's parts that when you have a land use entitlement that goes with a property, it somehow brings a premium to that property. This will eliminate that perceived premium, so that that is not a factor in what may or may not impact the price of that property.
Okay, and so, that's, that's part of the goal, is to remove that?
That perceived premium for them having a land use entitlement that goes in perpetuity.
It also, it also, by basically having the right to rent out your house for less than thirty days forever, which is what it currently is right now, the concern of the council is, is that long-term, as, as people keep them, as people keep the CUPs forever, and more and more CUPs are granted, eventually, every home has a CUP, and there is the degradation of the long-term housing stock. What this does is it makes certain that the CUPs do not last forever, and that there is at least a perspective for more turnover as people sell properties, 'cause some people may not want to pay the license fee, pay the business fee, and stuff like that.
So, there's some hope that this will help increase. So there's some hope that this will help increase the year-round housing stock?
It's, it's possible, but it is possible that it would. There, you know, through this whole arduous process that Rosio and Amanda have gone through looking at all of them, I mean, there are people that have them that never use them in the house.
I know there's a lot of people that do that.
I think that that will be the ultimate goal, too, that you won't have units in the list, in the queue as a transient rental, that they're not really renting yet transiently. You'll have a clearer database of who's actually using their property as a vacation rental.
So this is kinda sets up a biannual or annual review of everybody?
Annual review, you come in, you, you're not going to go through the process of the trouble if you're not actually renting it. There's, there's no, there's no asset that you can sell to someone else, so there's no point in-
Hoarding it.
Pretending to rent it.
Okay. I mean, I know that the whole-
And though we're, you know, we're, we're little, but that, in some of the research that was done by the planning department, we're, we're, we're one of the few that still has short-term rentals being a-
A conditional use.
An entitlement. A land use entitlement.
And land use entitlement. So I, I think we're trying, we're just seeing that this could be less cumbersome than what's happening here now. People have changed, we're very, we're one of the very few that still does it.
We were the first ones to do it, we were the last ones to even it.
You were one of the, you were absolutely one of the first to do transient occupancy CUPs. Now, the rest of the state is catching up, but when they're catching up, they're doing it as licenses to kind of have more short-term control over it. And so this was, what we're doing, the direction that we were given is to come up with something that was, I guess, a compromised position from banning them completely to, you know, keeping them on the books forever, and this is what we came up with, with the council and planning commission's year of work.
Would provide short-term control and long-term control.
Yeah. More long-term opportunities.
Do you have an objection to this, Pete?
Pardon me?
Do you have an objection to?
Objection? No, I was just curious. I know that the CUP thing is a, is a big deal, and I, to me, it's, it's an, it's kind of an interesting, it's a hotly contested event, but I'm sure everybody in the building has gone somewhere and rented something, and spent a day or two or a week, and gone out to dinner and done their thing, and come home and eventually leave, and the, and the perception appears that everybody is gonna show up, throw up out the window, run around the neighborhood naked, make a bunch of noise, and I don't think that typically happens. So everybody seems to be afraid of this thing, and, I mean, in my neighborhood, the now easiest place in the neighborhood is privately owned house across the street that they party up all the time. So that's, they don't have a CUP, they just have a lot of fun, so.
A lot of friends.
I, I don't know that, you know, that just because you have a rental means that everybody's gonna make a bunch of noise and abuse and ruin the neighborhood. So I'm just curious as to what the objective of all of this, this newfound approach to monitor this, the permit was. But that makes sense, as long as it's, you know, it's a logical approach. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Okay, Eric, you were gonna give us your saturation? Oh, there's somebody else, I'm sorry.
Hi, guys. Just as a recommendation, since I've gone through this quite a bit, it seems a lot easier for you guys to do legislatively and practically, to try to, so just a suggestion, not really a biased opinion, but to try to use those CUPs, whether you want to continue issuing them or not, kind of regardless of that fact, that instead, you could amend possibly that provision, so that there is TOT activity, addressing what Amanda mentioned, some of these things are holding on to CUPs that are garnering no TOT, no use for the lifetime, and just kind of as a feather onto a cap of the property. Seems like that's what you're interested in going after. So if you might propose some sort of minimum number of nights remitted to TOT per year, per two years, or a dollar amount that you'd like to associate with that, I think you'd have less work to do in terms of phasing out those CUPs that, that would be sort of grandfathered in. While you can create then, at the same time, a separate plan for the yearly licensing system that you're, that you're also suggesting. And while you do that, you can enforce them in the same way and keep track of them at the same time. It's, it's sort of managing the same amount of people, or the amount of properties, and that way, those that aren't getting activity, we can go ahead and drop off and say, hey, you know, here's the rules, you haven't used this, you haven't been remitting TOT, or you haven't been complying with our noise ordinance, you haven't been complying with our over occupancy, what have you. I think that providing some way of making that revocation process just as easy on staff as revoking a license, might be a quicker route to some of your struggles.
And let me just address two things in just direct response to that. We have talked about, is there a minimum length of time that you should, you know, use it and stuff like that? And, and the administrative calculation of doing that, and just the political, you know, counting, what is it, two, five, there was no, there was no consensus to do that, so they came up with the license. The other issue is, because these are CUPs currently, if they are not used, the code says that they expire within one year automatically, but because they're CUPs, to revoke them, you have to have a public hearing.
Right.
And so what we've done is, and so that would be a, and that's a trial, it's basically, and so, we can't do it administratively, we have to do it as a planning commission, and we are setting aside a date next year to have about eighteen of those trials, where we would be revoking CUPs that have sat dormant.
Yeah, and the idea is to put them in the same funnel as all of the other licenses that you'd like to, that you'd like to issue, rather than having them in that, in that forum. I understand that you do have that process, and that may require your, your sort of sunset period or amortization for those properties. You know, it's not, you're not going to be able to attack them all in the first year, but having them in the same funnel makes that, makes that process pretty easy, and they could just be flagged separately on a spreadsheet and, you know, checked, or, or in a, you know, what do you call it, a tickler file, that will, that will show up every once in a while. Just a suggestion, not really advocating for anything.
No, that's, that's great, because I think that's what we were talking about, too, when we first started this. I mean, because I have your same concerns, it's like, okay, we already have the application process, we have what they have to comply with, and-
And the, and the investment.
And who is, who, who is the police making sure that everybody's in compliance? And I think it kinda got off to the wayside, where nobody really's been paying attention, and so, it's like, in the beginning, when we started this years ago, it was hard to say, oh, let's just stop them, because we didn't really know what we're stopping, or who we're stopping, because we don't know any facts in front of us on who's using it, who's not, who's not complying, and so it's like a process. So I, I hear what you're saying, because even with the licenses, if we don't have anybody behind making sure it's being done, then we're gonna go back to the same.
Well, it may be possible for you to craft something that requires someone to comply with the same annual review process, to just make sure they're meeting all of the other rules.
Right.
And kind of exclude them based on that, and, and just say, like, you know, here's your, here's your violation schedule, and eventually, it'll get you off of our list.
Right.
You know? And, and it, and it fits the same rules as everybody else, because you're talking about, you know, kind of licensing out that property, or giving license for them to, to use the property for such. So, you know, why not consider the same rules to somebody who has a CUP? I don't think you should subject them to the same, like, yearly situation, because it's not what they were expecting, and that kind of brings a lot of legal confusion as well. But, yeah, with all effort, you guys should try to make it as single path as you possibly can, so. Good luck.
Thank you.
Come back, come back next month, we should have the draft ordinance ready.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Saturation. Anyone else on, okay, saturation? Eric?
Okay. I'm gonna try to make this simple and clear, but I realize it's, it's not. But within the context of our current discussions, where we're going towards a license, which will track what's real and what isn't, and start eliminating what isn't really a CUP, and getting those off the records. And amortizing them, so we'll even get, well, basically, it's, it's that. We'll start knowing what's more real and eliminating CUPs off that aren't being used. With that in mind, what I'm thinking saturation is, is where we are right now. So let's just, and this is under kind of the presumption that, one of the observations we've had is that really, we are pretty much maintaining our CUPs. Some come offline, and others go online, but it's not that drastic. So what I would propose is that at the street level, we count up all the CUPs and say, that's it. Just like the autos, if you want one, you have to wait for someone on that street to come off. However, because this is new, maybe just to provide a little softening of it, say, on every one of those streets, plus one. So if this came into a, if this happened immediately, we would say, you can only have one on when one goes off, except we'll allow one more on that street, if you meet all the other criteria. The second part, I'm thinking, is maybe plus two, if you provide permanent resident within that same unit. So if you have a year-round rental, and the CUP will allow one more on that street, just as an incentive. Now, but I, I think the way this would play out is it would seem like a hard fast, no more new ones, but I think the reality is, one, we wouldn't get that many more, but you would still be able to get new ones as the old ones are found not being used. So if we presumed in our original count that we're at saturation, that includes the ones that are grandfathered in, or licensed, or whatever way they're maintaining them, but aren't real, so like, this summer, if we bumped fifteen of the eighteen out of existence, those would still counted as saturation for that street, so it might open one or two up on that street.
So-
Does that make sense, or?
What I'm, what I'm hearing is, based on the current list, which includes people who pay the twelve dollars a year to keep it active-
For whatever, just lock into that list.
Whatever that list is. If there's twenty-four on Clarissa, Clarissa can only have one more. If there's six on Catalina, Catalina could only get one more. If there's four on Whitley, Whitley could only get one more.
Yeah. And then it would preserve- It would only be allowed when an old one gets bumped off or goes off.
And so that would basically keep, keep the status quo in terms of the distribution of CUPs throughout the city. Be more on the flats and less on the hills.
Right. Which is how, where we evolved since the beginning of Avalon up to this point.
All right. That's one option.
That's real close to the idea that I had laid out, but I could go with that, except for I wouldn't like the idea of, say, instead of allowing one, one more and then one more width, I would say, one more width, period.
Yeah, I like to.
One more extra if you provide, one more extra on your street if you provide year-round housing.
And that can be where we give options.
But year-round housing, you mean, I'm, I'm just wanna clarify, not in that unit, but if you own other property in Avalon?
That's a good question.
Because if it's a single-family home, then you're not gonna be providing-
But we don't have single-family homes, or, I mean, we do, but they don't have to be anymore. So I would say-
Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to clarify.
So let, let me ask you a question then to clarify.
On the property.
So you're talking about, as far as the density and saturation goes, going by the same model of surrounding properties? Where you're talking block by block, neighborhood by neighborhood?
What I'm thinking is, the saturation of surrounding properties doesn't work.
Okay.
I'm saying that's, we can either keep that or not keep it. In fact, maybe we should keep it, but in addition to that, each street, in a sense, is saturated. So not block by block. We had this discussion earlier, where I was thinking we should do it by neighborhood, and then it kinda came up.
It's block by block.
That would be difficult, but I mean, that would be an option, is not do it street by street, but kind of come up with neighborhoods, and then do it neighborhood by neighborhood, even though we don't have neighborhoods.
But it would be like the one hundred block of Whitley, the two hundred block of Whitley, the three hundred block.
And I don't wanna, I'm not taking your idea or your concept in opposition.
No, but this is totally, this is a first cut, so I-
Well, I get it. So when you first started your discussion, I think it was very sensible, when the first thing you said was, as we decipher through this and determine who has, who's using, who's not, the reality is, is that, that I think probably in the history of living on the island, which is approaching forty years, there's always been about this same base number, plus or minus one or two. So if your concept is, this is the total number of volume of, of CUPs that we want allowed in our community, I get it. What I take a little bit of, of opposition to is not trying to die it in, tie it into the neighborhoods, because the reality is that there are some neighborhoods now that have very few, right? There are neighborhoods that have, in my opinion, too many. But I don't think we really know the impact on the neighborhood until we determine the uses. How many are really using it? There may be, you know, if, if our end goal is to reduce CUP volume by twelve percent, if that's an end goal, how do you get there?
And I see where you're going, but that's not my end goal. Mine isn't to reduce any. Unlike the cars, I'm not thinking two have to go off before one goes on.
Well, and that, so that's my, so when this, so when you tied this conversation to the cars, my light bulb went off. Because the reality is, is that when that was first proposed as a vehicle ordinance in this town, the application volume that hit the city in that, in that era, it's just like, hey, I'm gonna get mine.
It's happening now.
And so, I caution ourselves to be careful what we wish for.
Right. But I, I don't, I don't actually see that as the same kind of problem, because I think part of the reality is, we've been at that basic level for so long, and the reason rentals are in the flats is because it's easier to rent them, you don't have to have a golf cart, and people like to walk to the beach. Up in the hills, it's kind of a pain in the neck. And I think what this, what this proposal does is provides stability, predictability at the neighborhood or street level. So you know, when you're moving in, that there's still gonna be CUPs there, you're still gonna have them on your street, they're not likely to go down, but they're not likely to go up either.
And the reality is, what's truly gonna drive the number and volume of CUPs available in this community is the demand. Truly, if, if every house on the flats right now is granted and issued a CUP, there would still be in the ballpark the same number of general rentable room rates and rentable, rentable nights, based on the demand of the public. What will affect it, however, though, is if there's a lot more of them, prices then go down. The weekly rents go down, some folks would decide to go, hey, I'm gonna go year-round instead of a CUP, because I'm, I'm not gonna be, I'm not anywhere any closer to, to my end game.
Well, anyway, that's my attempt at saturation, and that's my first draft, and really, it's just saying, we're at saturation, it doesn't mean there can't be more, but there's gonna be an equal amount.
But I did, I did ask that same question when this all started, because when it comes to saturation, if the CUP isn't being utilized at all, then there really is no impact. But then they, we all, everybody decided that it wasn't saturation, it was if there's a CUP, you gotta say that there's saturation, because it's a CUP. So that's where-
And that is very few.
Right. Well, I'm just saying that's, when this discussion happened, when I said, can we find out who's actually using them, and who's not, who's paying twelve dollars a year, and then because, but, because to me- a year, and then because, but, because to me, if nobody's using them, then there is not the saturation there, even though there is a blue, a red mark on the house, then it's saturation, because there's a red marker on the house, because they have a permit, which I understand, if you have that permit, you, we automatically assume it's being used, even though it was determined that it was not being used. So I'm not sure, I think we really need to, I, I'm not sure how it's gonna go, if it's gonna like backfire on us or not, because I understand where, I think basically what it is, is housing. Creating more housing, which we need. So it's really not saturation right now, it's really about creating housing.
Creating housing.
Well, and...
Which, which I'm totally, we, I'm not ignorant to the fact that we do not have housing, but I don't wanna actually, you know, I don't, I don't know if this is gonna like completely backfire on us, because I, I don't want it to. We do have a shortage of housing, but just like you just said, is it saturation really? Because if they're not even using it, it's not saturation.
But, but we're trying to plug that in now, that part where if you don't use it, you lose it. So that is with, and I, and that's why I'm happy that we're hoping that we're gonna move towards an administrative permit, because we'll have a little bit more control on that. But I, I, I would like to add a little, something more, a little more tweaking to what Eric is presenting, because I think it's a good idea. But I, I would say on that, I, I would still like to see, in, all with this idea of providing more housing for locals, 'cause, is that, that there also would be, and I don't even wanna say a number, of a limit of percentage by block, because we, we have talked about that, is saying, okay, only so much of a block can be dedicated to transient rentals. However, if, if you're on a, if you would like to have, I like this idea that you had of, if you want a CUP and, and you haven't that kind of situation, saturation on your, that block, and you have, you provide year-round housing, then you could apply for a transient rental permit. I don't know, just add it, I just, I hate to...
You mean when one leaves?
I'm sorry?
When one leaves.
When one leaves, and, and if you have, you know, like, I'm always saying, you know, 'cause I think, you know, Clarissa is what, sixty? Eucalyptus is, what, what, it's thirty, seventy-something percent is transient rentals? I mean, nobody lives there on Eucalyptus anymore, and so, to me, it wouldn't even help if one backed out on Eucalyptus. I, I mean, to me, fifty percent, I'm just throwing it out. I'm just saying there is a limit, that to me, even when you do have one leaves, can't we look at the concern for a neighborhood and for long-term rentals also? But, but I think there should be some kind of incentive built into this to say, if you provide year-round housing and, I don't know, that's, I just think something, you sort of, you said it, Eric, and I like that.
I listened to a lot of, a lot of what you're saying, and I think our biggest problem, and we all know it, is housing. And I don't think playing with the whole ordinance with CUPs is gonna create that. I don't think it's gonna change the number of year-round residents. I don't think that we tell someone who has come here and applied for a CUP for thirty-two hundred dollars, that is willing to pay the city twelve percent of their CUP, that they have to rent it a certain number of nights either. You're paying us, you, you've paid the city plenty. So again, like you were saying, if no one's using it, I think we ought to be addressing, how do we get more housing, actually building units that cannot be CUPs, that, things like that. We're talking private people's property. If you arrived here late, meaning we pass this, say, tomorrow, and you just came here and bought a property, you no longer could apply for a CUP, because you're saying it's saturated. It's been the same for forty years, guys.
But the difference is, Bart, the population has increased of year-round residencies, and as you say, the housing has grown very little. And I do agree with you, we do need more housing, but how's that gonna happen? I mean, and how long are we looking for? The state is, is demanding now that we make, we figure out something. And, and so, you know, look what the city of Los Angeles just did, which I know you know, about short-term rentals. I mean, it's, it's, it's getting, like...
Only thing I can say is, this, the short-term rentals, the CUP, toque tax, in this town accounts for over half of our budget.
Including hotels, that includes hotels. It's not just CUPs.
I'm aware of that.
Okay.
I'll tell you, and we're down, there, there's no saturation in the hotel metro going on right about now.
What I'm saying is, is when you start telling the market what it can do and what it can't do, it seldom works. The market corrects itself. As Bob was saying, if everyone was trying to vacation rental their property, there would be no demand for them, therefore, many more of them would, would quit doing it.
Well, that's economic theory, and that is exactly what it is, theory. So I could see it a whole different way, because we can't really prove it in long-term, considering the space and the place and the numbers. We just have to say that is one theory of economics that happens, so...
The invisible hand of God.
Well, it's just, I, I, I mean, are you, so are you throwing the bath out with the bath bomb?
No, 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 no.
Are you saying that all this work on CUPs, you're fine?
No, no, no.
Let's focus, let's focus on...
Saturation.
On, on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Let's focus on what the council wanted.
Yes.
They did not want one item of saturation. They wanted a menu that they can choose from. So there's been a proposal to cap the CUPs at the current number, and either plus one per street if you, if you have it, or, you know, it's a number, but you can get one per street once one, someone comes off. So I'd like to at least, and, and again, you can, you can establish the parameters. If two people are in favor of that, or three people, do you wanna include that in your recommendations? Because I can see, I know, if we're gonna say it has to be four or five, you're probably not gonna have, you're gonna have like one recommendation maybe. So again, you establish the rules as to how many suggestions do you think is appropriate, and how many, how much support of the planning commission each proposition you think is necessary, to put it up to the council? Because remember, they're gonna decide, and if you, if you only, if you only can agree on one, they're gonna say, no, you failed. What, what were your other options? Please let us decide.
So I have this a little clear in my head now, what I'm, what I'm trying to get to. I like what Eric's saying, but I want, I would like to add to that, I'm gonna just throw it out, forty percent, any block. If you're on Marilla, it's not forty percent, it's not there. So you can apply for a transient rental permit in your home if you're also providing a year-round rental. And then, when it hits forty percent on Marilla, then it's the same system as every other place. So that's just, that's all, that's my, and we can all...
That sounds like option number two, to me.
That's right.
So, I could say so far we had two on the table.
You're saying Clarissa's at sixty percent now, correct?
It's more than that.
Okay, so it's more than that.
And Eucalyptus is more than that.
Okay, so then no new ones would come on until you've hit that forty percent?
No, then on, on Clarissa, no, no new ones could be applied for until somebody backs out.
I guess what I'm getting at, that I think is missed in this whole conversation, is the reason the flats have more rentals is price. It has, it has more to do with price of the real estate you're buying than the price of the properties in the hills. So if you, if you do it, what you're suggesting here, the city's revenue is gonna drop drastically. You start taking streets that have seventy-five percent, and, and you have to let all these leave. What you guys take in as a city, yeah, because they're not gonna reestablish up in the hills, the people are paying...
No, 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 but, but what Eric's saying is that we do it that way that on, it's gonna, unless they're, they're not gonna, you lose the CUP. I mean, we have proposed this now, this is now, we're kind of back, backtracking, to say, if you don't use it, you lose it. Now, you're taking a different position now, we kinda went there. So, but I'm saying, if it's at seventy percent, it's probably gonna be seventy percent forever, but, but nobody else can get one until one of those goes, so then they can get it, and it'll stay at seventy percent.
Okay, you're not saying you have to drop to the...
I thought you said it would drop to forty.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is though, there is nowhere near forty percent on...
Marilla.
Marilla. And so what I'm saying is, on Marilla, you could, you could build it up to forty percent if you were a person that was a homeowner that wanted a conditional use for, I mean, not a conditional, a, a transient occupancy administrative license, then if you provided year-round housing, housing, you can get it. Like if you have a year-round housing rental as well, or a accessory dwelling unit, if you have a place, you're renting a room in your house, the things we talked about that were forming the...
So what you're proposing is they would not be subject to the cap, the percentage cap, if they're also providing a year-round rental?
Well, until they hit forty percent.
Well, that's what I'm saying, they're not, they're not...
And then they would be subject, just like everybody else, somebody would have to back out, so that only, you know, that at maximum in our...
So whether or not they're providing year-round housing isn't relevant?
At that point, at that point, if somebody backs out, well, yeah, as long as it would have hit forty...
Would that also, though, be premised upon we're capping the overall number, and then this is how they go, or are you just saying your proposal is, it's just a percentage on each street?
Street by street.
Street by street. So there's no overall cap?
You're, you're saying percentage.
I'm saying percentage, I'm not saying overall.
Yeah, I like that idea. It's totally different.
So whatever, whatever percentage the street is...
It's different enough to be, you know, to, to be useful in a discussion.
So whatever the percent, so I understand, so the one hundred block, the two hundred block of Clarissa, which is probably the most saturated, is at sixty percent, I'll pick a number. So the, the two hundred block of Clarissa would be limited to sixty percent, the three hundred block of Clarissa may be limited to fifty percent. Whatever the current percentage is for each block, that's what they would be capped at.
No, I think...
Which is, or you're picking one percentage and that applies to everybody?
I think this different proposal says every street or district or neighborhood is forty percent, right?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, so we need to...
I wish, but I don't know how you could make that...
Well, I mean, I think you could say that, and then if you're over forty, you don't get a new one, if you're under, you do, and, and the result would be, you would in theory freeze everything in the flats and you would get new ones.
That would be the third.
Okay, there's a third, so...
Okay, so let's, let's, let's make sure we...
And I would like to take all three of those concepts and ideas and have staff take a minute and put it on a map.
Take more than a minute.
We have it, Dave, Dave?
Well, but not, not by these numbers and directions. What it actually means to the specific neighborhood is what I think is relevant.
Would, so if you took, picked, let's say, if we picked forty percent, if you wanted to pick forty percent and see what it looked like?
Yes.
Then we would come back with a map that says, these streets are below forty percent, these streets are already above forty percent.
And then while you're going through that process, it's gonna allow staff the time to weed, we'll be weeding out some CUPs that are currently on, on the rolls that will no longer be.
The ones that are scheduled for vacation.
So we've got some issues there. The reality is, is that all of this is super meaningful. I don't think doing exactly what we're talking about right now is gonna handle, inhandle in any way or impact our housing.
Right, that could be true.
But what it is going to do, is it's gonna free up this commission's time to spend time on developing and building some housing, because the only way that we're going to solve our housing problem is if we get dirty with the developer and get some stuff built and have the water to do it.
Well, every little thing helps.
But that's, but that's been an issue here in this community since I've lived here. I mean, it's all, there's always been a housing problem, and unfortunately for the CUP, the CUP's blamed for our housing problem.
I don't know.
It is, I mean...
CUP is blamed for a loss of neighborhood, in my opinion.
That also, that also.
But you know what, I was gonna say, before you came to join us, we did get, and I bet if you asked Rosio, she would give you the, she's done, I mean, it's not perfect, because I don't know if it will ever be completely concise, but she can give you the maps that show, and she can give you the street-by-street percentages, as we, as, as they've done a pretty, you know, and all the numbers, I mean, she's done a pretty good job, because...
Right, but as, but as some of these CUPs drop, that, those neighborhoods could change significantly.
Well, they're working on it.
Right, so, so I think, I think his request is, there's three proposals, and we have to, we have to delineate what their proposals are. Proposal number one is, the current number right now is boom capped, and then the question is...
Replace when they come out.
Replace when they come out, but what about, though, if you have a full-time resident? How does that work?
Yeah, two more.
Okay.
Let's go two, and then not anymore. I kinda like Mike's idea, only if within the same unit.
And that's citywide?
Citywide.
So you're saying, you, they get two, if one leaves, you get two?
No, 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 it's just one for one.
Oh, okay.
One, everybody, we're at saturation, most of the...
And each street can get, if, if one comes off of Eucalyptus, then one can go on to another street?
Pete, would you like to say something?
We're gonna stick with the street, so if one comes off, one goes on.
I'm not understanding the...
If one gets bumped off, one can go on.
I'm not understanding the two one.
Oh, and then every street can get in addition to its saturation, two more, but those units would have to have a full-time rental within them.
So they can only go over the current cap, by no more than two, and only if they're providing year-round units?
And that, I mean, that's just a good, clear definition of what saturation is. We'll see if it has legs.
I think Pete would like to say something.
But I like it in comparison to the other ones, too, because, I mean, if we have three proposals...
Okay, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, so we can, we can map this.
And if you can get close to that, that will be good.
Okay, so that's one.
Okay.
And then...
And that's as far as I'm concerned.
Second proposal.
And then, I'm just, I'm, I, that, the first one, but with the, with a cap before we get to the levels we are on the flats, that we cap, put a cap on, by percentage, on streets that don't have seventy percent transient occupancy, transient occupancy on those. So on a street like Marilla, that it, I don't know what it is, but let's cap it now, that it says we can do forty percent, unless you put a cap on forty percent, and then unless you are providing year-round housing for someone, then you could be a person above forty percent.
So is this gonna apply for...
You're saying if you're adding another housing, then, then we would take that one as a CUP?
So that's just, okay.
As we keep calling them CUPs, but yeah, but I can...
So, so what I, what I'm trying to understand is, for that one, then, it's, it's, the percentage is capped at where it is right now, so that means no more, the number is also capped.
Well, on those that, that, you know, we have some streets here that are at fifteen percent are transient rentals, and we have Eucalyptus that's at seventy, and we're not saying take that away, but we are saying for those that aren't at that, that, at, aren't it, let's, let's set a number now.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm looking for.
For streets that aren't huge rentals for transient rentals.
So are you saying that can be up to, that can be a higher amount?
I'm gonna, no, I'm gonna say, let's, let's put a cap on that, by percentage.
So let's, so, but let's, let's do baby steps, baby steps.
I'm not understanding the percentage.
Right.
Well, well, I'm saying, 'cause, 'cause we need to, you know, people are into transient rentals, right? We, we need it for, so, so if we make it so that there can be no more on the flats, because it's take one, get one, that they're not gonna get anymore, then if we take it onto streets that don't have so much, and yes, I agree, with the golf carts, it's an issue, and that might have to be something else that we think of that goes with that, to say, you can provide parking, whatever, but to say, let's cap those streets at something now, so that we don't get to the point that we are, 'cause, 'cause it's also, like, if, if you are doing it the same way you're doing it on the flats, my gosh, you know, that's...
Okay, so let me, so, I've got it, I've got it. So, so, so here's what I think it is. So, so let me, let me get this. So currently, we're gonna come up with a number that has, let's say it's twenty percent or thirty percent, that, that is the, that is the maximum number that, that you can have on a street, so that...
Anywhere.
Anywhere, and that if you already have, if you have more than that, you can't increase the numbers, you can only maintain it. Right? And so that will still allow CUPs to, to be added, but it doesn't allow further saturation on areas that already have, you know, above that, above that percentage. But it doesn't allow further saturation on areas that already have, you know, above that, above that percentage.
Unless they're giving a housing unit.
Unless, yes, got it.
That's what I'm saying, is that.
So that's what you're saying?
I'm trying to articulate that in a.
Got it, no, it makes sense.
We can grow to forty percent on other blocks if you provide, because if we wait for one of those to drop on Marilla, and, you know, we're not, it's not doing any good for local housing. But if we said, yes, you can have a CUP if you're providing year-round housing for someone else.
So we have, the first, the first date is a percentage that applies to every block, thirty percent.
Well, it, it, what, what?
Wait, 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 thirty percent applies to every block, yes.
And what's that percentage, thirty?
Let, let's just say, we'll pick thirty, whatever, I mean, they'll have to pick a number, but let's start for purposes of articulating this. Thirty percent in every block. If you have a block that's already over thirty percent, they would be limited to the one-on, one-off. So that that block doesn't become any more saturated than what it currently is. The exception to that restriction would be if they are proposing a property where they can also provide a year-round housing unit. That property would not be subject to the one-on, one-off rule or to the thirty percent rule.
Uh, no, I'm not for that. I think, I don't want to see any more on flats. I want to see it so.
So if they're over percentage, if they're beyond the allowed percentage, they can do one-on and one-off, but there's no special exemption for year-round housing.
And so, the percentage would be where it's at now.
So, but then if you're on a street and it's only ten percent, and the number's thirty, then you can get twenty percent, you can get more homes until you.
So there is, so there would be no exception then for having produced full-time housing?
No, there would be on places.
Then we're confused.
So a place that has fifteen.
Then I'm completely confused.
Are you saying a place that say has fifteen percent now to reach the cap or whatever it says?
Of forty percent, I mean, we're just pulling that number.
But you have to, in order to reach that for, when you add one, you have to have permanent housing to reach that.
You already have to be, you have to be providing year-round housing already, and then you could have a transient rental in the same.
In order to reach.
In order to go up to the allowed cap.
Up to, the allowed count.
Okay, so it's a, it's a static that.
It's a status quo unless you provide year-round housing.
It's a status quo, citywide.
Is this the same for condominium associations too?
Well, don't they set their own?
They do.
Actually, that's a good point. I would say in my scenario, it doesn't include the Hades.
Hamilton Cove.
Hamilton Cove. Those are their own animal, and this doesn't apply to that.
But then some do, I mean, like Fairview does not, right?
Fairview does not have, I have a conditional use permit.
They don't, and then, but do all the rest, yes?
I think Sol Vista does currently have them.
Yes, they do.
I know Bahia Vista does.
Those are their governing documents.
But I do know for, I do know, I do know that they're not allowed at Fairview.
But if we set the entire, I think it should, I mean, unless they're, they're a housing association.
It's a housing association, their CC and ours does not allow transient rental.
Fairview.
Fairview, yeah.
But the other ones, they do, but like, the one, I mean, it's well over fifty percent. So I don't, I mean, I, to me, I think that should be part of the cap.
At Hamilton?
No, no, Hamilton, I think is its own animal.
Like Bahia Vista or that?
Yeah.
Bahia Vista's mostly all, well, but he.
So I don't think they should be.
I don't think you leave the condominium associations up to the condominium associations, because they have their own governments themselves. So if they're okay with it, what do we care? You're collecting money from it, their stain is, you know what I mean? They're inside that condo.
It doesn't change the neighborhood.
Doesn't change the neighborhood, neighborhood is what it is.
I think the cap should apply to all of them except Hamilton Cove. It's not my vote. And, and only here's why. Because if we're picking, if we're picking forty percent, Bahia Vista would stay the way it is, one-on, one-off at Bahia Vista.
Hamilton Cove's over.
Hamilton Cove is, I don't think should be in the mix.
Right, I agree.
I think what we've seen happen at Bahia Vista, and I don't know that we have the opportunity to reverse it, is you can't get a regular mortgage at Bahia Vista because there's too many transient rentals. So, but this ordinance is probably not going to fix that or change that. So I think in order to articulate perhaps one more time for Scott, is what we're looking at is a maximum cap, citywide, not including Bahia Vista, not including Hamilton Cove. Whatever that is on per streets, they would be, the streets that are over that cap would be allowed one-on, one-off. The streets that are under the cap could be allowed to apply until they reach the cap.
No.
With the, with the stipulation that they are also providing year-round housing.
So there'll be, there'll be no new ones on those streets?
No new ones, period, citywide, unless you're providing year-round housing.
Good.
Unless it's one-on and one-off.
You know what, it hasn't changed.
Okay.
I'd like to, an alternate.
I would like to see, I would like to see us ink this on paper and let us, you know, spend a day or two reading it before you send it to the council, because I would like to.
We're going to come back with a map and everything.
Well, I thought, I thought you wanted to come back with each, each one of these proposals?
Yeah.
With a map that shows what it would look like and what the impact is.
My, my proposal is, you leave the saturation alone, and the reason being is, just us having this conversation in just the last five meetings, the number of CUPs has gone up.
That's right.
It has happened just like it did when you started playing with cars. If you start sounding the alarm, people start trying to get them.
Well, isn't that up to us to vote for them, yes or no?
But Jenny, there's, there's an application process, it's called due process.
Then it would be her office.
It's the municipal code.
Well.
We haven't.
We have a general plan.
Trying to change everything right now. We are only, we're not the ones who, who can change the municipal code, that's the city council. That's why we're here, trying to figure out how we can make a better Avalon and create housing, less saturation, that's our job to discuss this. Give it to the city council, they're the ones that could only change the policy.
But it took so long for the, just the council even to get the direction, I mean, that, we've been talking about it for six months.
Yeah, but actually, if you think about it, it's probably less time than any other city around. I mean, if you think about it, because we're so small, I mean, everything takes time, and we want to make sure it's done properly, else we're going to have this, this whole conversation again.
To be fair, we've been talking about CUPs for thirty-five years.
And I, and we, we, but I think, like, I'm pretty excited that we might even be approaching something. What, because I remember this conversation at city council regarding auto ads, right? And there was this big whoop, and the first thing out of Ollie's mouth was, if we don't put a moratorium on it, it, this is exactly what's going to happen, right? Well, come on, that, that's one of them, you're one of them, that, you know, you said, oh my gosh, I better get one now, I mean, you know.
Oh, yeah, I said about the CUP.
So, I mean. So, um, where was I going? So they, and they didn't do it, and that is exactly what happened. Seventy auto ads applications or something crazy came in. How, is that possible? Could we say a three-month moratorium?
And yes, it's legally possible. I will tell you that every time in the last ten years, this has gone up to the council, there has not been a vote to put a moratorium on.
Duh, but they're the ones that asked us to do this.
I know, but they, but they've also said no moratoriums. Every time it's come up to them, they talk about it a little bit, and then when we, when we bring it for an action item or a discussion.
But could we try it? Can't we try it? Because it's kind of, I mean, I'm just going to say.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't try it unless they, they didn't give you direction for that. You could talk individually to your council people and see if they want to put it on the agenda.
But didn't we send them saturation?
Because it's come up so many times, and they've, they've all said no.
I, back to the proposals, I like Bart's proposal, that status quo.
Status quo, well, yeah.
Because if we're going to, you know, measure these other two new ideas, it would be really nice to measure them against what's going to happen if we don't, if we do nothing.
Okay.
But doing nothing really isn't doing nothing, it's doing, I guess, the same saturation definition, but under our new.
License.
Our new license.
Okay.
So it is going to be, to me, it's really a valuable.
We're not not doing anything, because you're going to have revocation hearings, next, you're going to have revocation hearings, next, next, next year, you're going to have them converted to licenses?
But it's doing nothing in terms of the definition of saturation.
Yeah, that's the problem.
So I think that's, that might have a lot of value, is if we can.
Okay.
My, my assumption is, as we do this, a new person buys in the neighborhood and they realize they can't rent it out. So now I can rent it out thirty days at a time, and I don't pay the city a tax. So I simply put four renters together and under one lease, and they rent it out for thirty days at a time. There are ways that people will do, and all you're doing is now the city doesn't get the twelve percent. And what I'm saying is, the number of CUPs has stayed the same.
And, Bart, when does that happen?
When has what?
Four people buy something and.
Oh, please, it happens all the time.
Really? This is the first I've ever heard that.
Well, if you rent for two weeks, you just, but if you don't want to rent it very much, you rent it for two weeks, and say you rented it for thirty days. And nobody's doing a bed check, or like, he's right.
But that's a different issue.
Okay, we have three proposals now, three proposals, any more saturation proposals?
That, that's true, he's saying status quo, that's one.
Status quo's one.
All right, and.
Okay, we have, we have, we have the overall.
Pull yours, or?
No.
No, 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 we have three, we have, we have, we have an overall cap, we have an overall cap, we have a percentage cap. And we have doing status quo with.
The one-on, one-off.
With the new license.
With the new license and, and the new procedures.
And they're all within the new licensing.
And no, no, no cap. No, we, we would hold by the same saturation criteria, which is nothing right now, there is no saturation criteria as far as I can. Well, there is, but it really, it, it doesn't work.
Not a difference.
Yeah, and, and, and we're still, you know, what, what I always perceive is to be, it's always this, it's always the bottom line is money, which I get it. However, there are also, we have, we have other umbrellas of criteria that we're supposed to be considering as representatives of the people that live here. So, and that would be the general plan, and the twenty-twenty vision, which is now here, and nothing.
We have one month, I think.
Yeah, yeah, we got a lot to do. Anyway, so I just, I, I, I always think that that can't be our only thing, so that's, anyway, that's all.
So we'll bring it back with some maps.
Anything else?
Good, along with any of these, and you're going to have revocation hearings. And we're talking about only having like fifty CUPs that are kind of up for grabs to be revoked or whatever.
No, I think there's like, how many do we have that we haven't heard from?
Oh, we have ten, ten.
Yeah, that's ten. So there's ten up for revocation.
But you see, but, but so we're doing these maps, I mean, somehow, and I know this is hard, you need an inventory. And remember how many times that people have talked, and especially like on Clarissa, oh, well, they're renting under the table.
Well, we can't, we have no way to map those.
You don't have any way to map them, but, you know, if they're going to have to start having inspections on units that aren't transient rental units. Yeah, things come out. I'm just, I know this is hard, but if you don't get a decent inventory, the saturation gets blown.
We're inspecting.
But, but Sandy.
We're inspecting units that are occupied by tenants. We're not expecting vacation homes that don't have.
They're supposed to be inspected by the people.
Even though we have the power to every three years, and there's a gentleman that's been standing at attention.
But wait, I want to say one.
For about an hour, and, you know, he, he looks like.
But remember, it's. Sandy, then it's worse.
Okay, is there anything?
Okay, so.
The audience is back. So, on this whole thing, I mean, one of the things, and it's hard to hear in here, but the, is there, is there some sort of minimum? If you, if you have a CUP, are you obligated to provide a minimum amount of TOT tax, or is there some minimum standard?
You have to rent it at least once, you have to rent it at least once a year and pay us the TOT.
Can that be raised?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Can you do a minimum amount? You've got to come up with three grand a year, or you're out.
Absolutely.
I mean, you could, that would separate the wheat from the chaff in a sense.
Let me ask you a question, Pete. So someone like myself who has a CUP and goes on a vacation for a week or maybe two weeks out of the year. Then you're saying I would have to rent out my property more often, and you're also.
This is your own home.
This is my own home.
Well, that's different.
Well, it's a CUP. And then you're saying anyone with a CUP that gets very little rental, they need to jack up the number of nights they're getting. So in the neighborhoods where you're already impacted by it, now you're going to be more impacted by it, because now they've got to put so many more nights in it to keep it.
And this is.
Well, that's just true, but you have to figure out what your objective is.
But Pete, this is one of the reasons why we're trying to get it out of a land use entitlement, because what's happening is that people are just pulling CUPs because they know it adds to the value of the property. And so what happens is, people get them, they don't use them, the city doesn't recoup anything from them.
Income tax-wise too, but, so, I mean, I, I like your idea, and it could be very good to incentivize somebody to generate a unit. I do not see somebody showing up and building a thirty-unit apartment building, ever. I think it's going to have to be onesies and twosies here and there, so. I think that, that if somebody wants to add a year-round rental, then they should be given a transient rental permit, regardless of whether there's saturation or not. And the other question I had is, is, hasn't the, the number of CUPs been fairly constant for quite a while?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
It is a yes, but the population has increased. Depending on what neighborhood, Pete.
Huh?
Depends on the street.
I mean, overall.
Isn't on my street.
I'm just saying, it sounds like you're regulating something that's already self-regulated in a sense, so.
That's the Bart Glass position, is that the, the ceiling is not a city ceiling, it's the market ceiling.
But the population continues to increase, and the housing doesn't grow.
Hidden hand.
I, I agree, that's why I think you should incentivize somebody to put something in their backyard, or cut their house in half, or whatever, I think that's a good thing. I don't think that.
That's our next item.
That's our next item.
Huh?
That's our next item.
That's our next item of discussion.
ADUs.
ADUs.
All right, any, anything else on this?
You'll be interested in this next item.
Yes, stick around.
Stick around.
Okay, anything else?
Sounds like a good place to start.
Okay, we'll start. We'll come back, we'll come back next month with the maps and the proposals. Okay, so the next one is just a, for your information item, we've provided a ordinance and a staff report with, that incorporates the changes that you mentioned at your last meeting. On ADUs to, one, we're complying with state law, and we took your suggestions, and they're in the redline version. And so our intent would be, at the next meeting, bring back the ordinance for a resolution recommending that it be adopted.
And probably the, the two most interesting items is, we were bringing this back in order to facilitate accessory dwelling units in multi-unit dwellings. And so on page three in section C and D, that's where most of that language is contained. Where you would also be able to add an accessory dwelling unit to, if you own a four or five-unit apartment building. This facilitates you being able to add an accessory dwelling unit to that property. And if it meets the criteria in the, outlined in the ordinance, it would be an over-the-counter permit.
That's what state law says.
That's under state law.
So state law says that you, if you have a multi, a multifamily lot, you are entitled to at least one ADU. We cannot prohibit that from happening, so you're entitled to at least one. And then, state law says, so we can cap it at twenty-five percent. So if you have a, a, like a, a ten-unit apartment, you're entitled to one, and you can get up to twenty-five percent, which was another two. You at least get one, but you've up, up to two, this is state law. So a lot of the things, that's, the original ordinance was presented to you, was what state law required. If you look at the redlines, we've just added your special Avalon flavors. And we would bring this back at the next meeting for adoption. So you have some time to look at this and give us any comments in the next month. And so next month, you'll have the actual ordinance ready to go. Again, it's, it's what state law requires, you have no option here.
And we had already, if you recall, we'd already adopted an accessory dwelling unit ordinance that applied only to single-family residences. So this has a lot of the similar conditions and parameters that we already saw in that ordinance. It just expands the opportunity for property owners who own a property that's already a multifamily dwelling unit. To add an additional ADU unit or junior ADU unit, and a junior is just a smaller unit, and they are restricted. And a junior is just a smaller unit, and they are restricted to year-round housing. They do not have an affordability covenant like you used to see under density bonus standards, so it's an opportunity for us to open the doors for people to hopefully provide some additional housing. The onesies and twosies.
I think it's great, because we don't have the land to build the single-family ADU dwellings in the backyard.
But you do on top of another.
Yes, so this is a great, great.
And they do, they will come with a golf cart. Is that correct?
No, I don't think.
I believe they come with a golf cart.
Did you? I thought we said.
I don't think so.
An address gets a golf cart, right?
I don't think we restricted vehicles.
But they have to be a detached dwelling, is that correct?
No.
They can be within.
It can be within.
Oh, well, okay, the second story.
So like on top of yours, you can probably put, it, it has to comply with the.
Altitude.
What they, what they, the state requires, like, I think a percentage of your building and square footage and, but you don't have to come in front of us to get one, you can do it at Amanda's office.
Quickly, are these actually a separate unit with its own meter and its own address, that kind of thing?
No. This is, this, it started as that.
Granny flag.
An accessory dwelling unit, is that considered an extra unit with its own address?
I don't know about the address.
Yes, it can have its own address. It won't have its own APN number.
No, no, I know, just, I got that. But it would have its own address. If you had a triplex on a lot, it would have, each one would have its own address.
Yeah, unit one, two, and three.
And its own meter.
Nope. No meter. Only if it's new.
So there's no water allocation?
No, you don't have to get enough water allocation.
No, no, it would have its own electrical meter.
That detached.
And its own gas meter.
Detached.
Detached require Edison.
So Edison says there is now a water allocation.
How is that possible?
Edison has taken the position all along that they have the distinct right as the purveyor of fresh water to say there is not a capacity for the additional units.
But that's not what I understood, that's not what I understood in the ADUs.
What are we doing?
Right.
Well, in one, if you had a three-bedroom house, though, you probably could make one unit a two-bedroom, and then your accessory.
Yes.
Right. We have to adopt this ordinance via state.
Right.
Because state law, if we don't adopt this ordinance, state law governs, which is what this ordinance is, but we've added some Avalon flavor, where they've given us discretion. And so we've, we've done as much as we legally can.
Just a question, and what happens with the water thing?
Yeah.
Does Edison overrule state law?
They would have to get on the water allocation list.
But wait, I thought that the city.
That's according to Edison?
Yeah.
According to Edison.
But not according to the city, but according to Edison, or both?
According to Edison.
Edison is the freshwater purveyor. I don't believe the city can say that, I don't believe the city can force Edison to give someone a freshwater allocation.
Okay, so, but the ADUs, I thought that when, that when we first talked about it and it went through.
There are some restrictions.
I thought that, I thought that that was, I thought it was no water, all the, you know, it was incentives to, to create.
To make more.
Make more homes.
Right.
And so I'm, I'm confused here.
There is some language, there is some language about capacity charges and connection fees and those type of things that cities aren't allowed to charge, but it doesn't appear to apply to Edison.
When, when we come back next month, we will have a, we'll ask Edison for a written, what their, what their policy is on ADUs.
Can I, can I ask, so if it's a junior ADU and it's within an existing house that someone, they, that's not, that doesn't work either with Edison?
I don't know that Edison's been asked that question.
I don't know if they've.
Right.
About junior ADUs, because that's just, that's just creating.
Well, but.
Taking existing space and adding something nice to it.
But so, and so, it's been a little while since I've been in the water conversation, but the reality is, is their water allocation to this community is by acre-feet available in the reservoir. As soon as that, as soon as that reservoir, and I'm not saying this is right, wrong, or indifferent, but the way that, way it's written right now is, once they get over that amount of acre-feet, they're required to release that water that's allocated on the waiting list, and they've not done so.
I would agree with that statement.
Okay, so, wouldn't it be to our community's advantage to call them to task on that?
Yes. And we've asked that question, and we were told that, we were told that they were going to begin issuing allocations for a lot of the smaller projects that are on the list, the one and two, one and two-bedroom type of projects, that they were, because some of the much larger projects, the hundred and fifty homes for the Island Company, were not going to be going forward in the near future, but I've only seen two letters come out in the last six months.
There's a five-day storm coming, starting on, I think.
The reservoir is full?
Yeah, the, yeah, no, there's a five-day storm coming. So Christmas Day, the reservoir will be flowing.
Flow resistors on people's properties when it's under that mark, and while we haven't achieved our goals and objectives, but once we, once we've recovered, now, I'm not saying that that's appropriate fix either, because we've been in water rationing more than we've had, you know, good things, but.
Understood.
Full and more full.
Follow-up.
We'll have, we'll have, we'll request that Edison provide us a written statement, what their position is on ADUs.
I think we need to be really, yeah.
Okay.
A little more clear on that.
Um, next meeting, Isaac will, will be done, I'm sorry.
Anything, any other questions?
I was still not, so, let's assume there's a water allocation necessary for an ADU. Will that still have its own water meter, its own gas meter, its own electrical meter?
I don't think the city cares whether they have a shared meter or individual meters.
It'd be a big expense for someone building the ADU, I would think.
Well, it'd just be easier on a, on a year-round rental to have, let them pay for all their own stuff, so.
But I don't think the city has a preference.
It would disincentivize the whole point.
And Pete, and then also, like, you've, you've heard about this accessory dwelling unit, and then they just added on that part of this new state thing, and we've looked at it again, is that it's a multifamily. The same thing will apply to within an existing place.
Same thing will apply to what?
This, well, there's accessory dwelling units can be, the, the first that came to us was about separate units being added to a piece of property where possible, whether it was above, behind, below. And then now they've done another one that's a multifamily dwelling, accessory dwelling